I'd like to declare the meeting open. I'd also like to remind everybody in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, this meeting is being livestreamed. The acknowledgement of country and prayer of counsel affirmation will be read by Dr Eddie Jackson, our C E O.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, councillors. The acknowledgement of contract. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Cabregal clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawal and Darug nations. The affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. And the prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Thank you very much. Do we have any apologies? Silence? Okay. Any condolences? Confirmation of the minutes.
Move by Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor Haddad. Any declarations of interest?
Yes, yes, I have, Madam Mayor. The, um, I have one.
Yep.
Plan O six, Warwick Farm.
Which one was it? I'm sorry.
Plan, Plan O six.
Plan O six.
Yep.
The deal with Warwick Farm.
Okay. All right, lovely. Thank you. And the reason?
Oh, family in the area, so it's, um, uh, non pecuniary, significant. I will be, I will remain in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
Yes, um, I have Convo four. So I, um, I know one of the, um, people listed, but less than significant, uh, non pecuniary, I'll stay in the chamber.
Thank you. Any others? None, thank you. Public submissions? Nil and written submissions, nil. Thank you. Next item is, uh, planning and compliance report on page seventy six.
Move by Madam Mayor.
Happy to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any opposition?
No, ma'am, just a question.
Sure.
Okay. When is the, it talks about the final report and the reviews coming to council. When is that coming to council through you or through the CEO?
Okay, I'll ask the CEO.
Mr Smith. Uh, thank you. Through the CEO, council, I'll need to take that on notice. I don't think it's too far away, but I don't have the exact date.
Thank you. And just another one for, for notice as well, if I can, Mayor.
Yes.
And this obviously not relates to the plan, but not to what we're talking about tonight, but the plan is in front of us. Things like, as part of the review, things like on page two eighty seven of the attachment booklet talks about a sixty space childcare facility. And for example, it's a two thousand square metre area and has a land cost of four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. Now, obviously on notice, um, surely a two thousand square metre site area where you can get sixty kid childcare centre would be worth more than four hundred and thirty eight thousand. Just something to sort of have a look at.
Okay, we'll take that on notice, council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any opposition? Then I'll put it as unanimous. Thank you. The next item is on page seventy nine. If I can get my pen to it.
amended.
I move for a seat and note of the report.
I do the report move by councillor Sheldon and councillor Rhodes.
Second it then, Madam Mayor, that's fine.
No worries.
Thank you. Councillor Sheldon and councillor Rhodes. Is there any opposition?
I have a bit of a question.
Yes, what is your question?
Sorry, again.
No worries.
Thanks. Um, we keep talking about ninety odd million dollar shortfall. I think we've spoken about this in a couple of council meetings previously. Have we done the numbers on the excess that we've actually gained? Because this was based on a minimum density dwelling. Obviously, people are going over the minimums. So has that been done in areas like Austra, Levington North?
I'll ask the CEO.
Mr Smith. Uh, thank you, councillor, through the CEO. Uh, we did provide a response to a question that was taken on notice at the last council meeting that I believe was circulated to councillors. So I'll track that down and have a look at it. But, um, my understanding from that response, uh, was that, yes, in some instances, there is development occurring greater than the minimum. Uh, but then that's offset by the fact that, um, uh, acquisition of land, for instance, is, is being higher than what's been identified in the plan. But certainly happy to revisit the advice previously given to council on that matter.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare carried. Next item's on page eighty nine.
I move as per the recommendations in the book, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Caliander. And that was seconded by councillor Hagerty. Any opposition? Yes?
Yeah, well, not so much opposition, but just a question. In regards to, uh, specifically the Ginko, um, uh, close, just in regards to that subdivision. Uh, late today, um, I received a petition in regards to, um, from eleven people that live in that area in regards to that subdivision. Um, there are fifteen issues listed out in here that are outstanding, um, basically, um, issues that have been raised by people that live in that, that neighbourhood. Um, what I'll do is I'll forward these through, but basically there are a number of complaints and issues about the subdivision, um, in that area that remain unresolved according to the people that live in that area. Uh, and I'd just like to bring that to the, uh, attention of council. So I'll send you through its got names, addresses, numbers and, um, a detailed list of, of issues that remain outstanding there in regards to mainly, um, sewerage, uh, quality of, uh, or things that should have been done that weren't, um, according to, uh, the, the residents, um, some issues around retaining walls, um, quality of the roadworks, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, I do understand that there was a certificate or a submission, uh, there was an application to get everything ticked off a couple of days ago, but before we do that, I think we should have a, a serious look at, at these list of issues, so.
Thank you, councillor. My suggestion was we pop that into presentations.
Sure, happy to do that.
Take it on board and we'll just when we get to presentations, just say you're submitting that, um, petition.
No worries.
Thank you. Any other op- opposition or questions? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next item is on page ninety four.
Happy to move as the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes.
Happy to second.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Is there any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous for the sake of the typist. The next item is on page ninety nine.
I'm happy to receive the report, Madam Mayor, but I have an addition to the motion.
Well, then you have a motion, councillor. What is your motion?
Council receive and note the report.
Mm-hmm.
And council make arrangements in order to adopt a COVID strategy for the animal welfare adoption processes in line with neighbouring councils, um, and in conjunction with the Rossmore vets COVID safe processes and the New South Wales health orders to be automatically used in future in lockdown situations, should they arise.
Thank you. Did you, did you wish to speak to your motion?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, Madam Mayor. Um, it's just that, um, yes, look, it looks like we're going to be going in and out of, um, lockdowns for the foreseeable future. And having gone to this, uh, effort of, um, of, of, of the report, it seems like the, uh, automatic next step that we, uh, take advantage of that and, uh, and adopt a COVID strategy that, um, will, uh, continue the adoption processes, uh, in future. Um, so that's, that's basically just what I'm doing. Perhaps we could add another point in there that we, um, we promote the COVID safe practices on council website and on social media. But I believe we're doing that anyway, but we should put it in the motion, just in, just to sign it off.
Thank you. Someone who should wish to second the motion?
Be the seconded.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Do you body wish to speak against it? Any further speakers for? Any opposition? Doctor Jackson, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just to point out, um, that as it currently reads, I think there's a, a typographical error on point two. I think it should read to adopt a COVID strategy.
Yeah, not coping. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
All right, thank you for that. Given there's no opposition, I'll declare it carried. Next item's on page one oh three.
Happy to move the recommendation.
Thank you.
Happy to move it, Madam Mayor.
We've got councillor Hall moving and councillor, um, Haddad seconding.
Yep.
Thank you, um. Yes, what is your question?
Um, considering the number of people that are wishing to join the advisory committee, should we, should, should we be leaving that till the next, um, set of councillors? Or does it, is there, is it absolutely essential that we do it now?
I'll take advice from the CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My understanding is that our preference is that we, um, make these appointments now. There was some review there, but I'll ask Mrs Bono if she can add some, um, further information to that.
Uh, uh, thank you, thank you. Through the CEO, um, through the chair, the, the key, um, reasons why we, we've gone for, um, for more membership, councillor Rhodes, is is due to, um, the COVID impacts impacting participation from the existing members. So we've gone, gone, gone out and seeked additional members to support, um, the committee and the committee members that we've largely nominated here uh, really dovetails into what speaks to the statistics of, um, of Liverpool in terms of D V and support in that area.
So you've actually gone out and sought these people. I think we should accept it. No worries. Thank you.
Is there any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. I'm really having trouble with my pen tonight. Keeps clicking. Okay, thank you. The next item is on page one sixteen. Thank you, councillor, uh, Haddad and seconded was?
Sheldon.
Councillor Sheldon, thank you so much for that. Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, carry. Next item's on page one two O.
Mayor, can I move something?
You can.
That we receive a note.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and point two then would be, uh, any grants, uh, by application only.
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Yep, good idea.
I've just, I've just to hold on a minute, I'll ask the CEO, is that in order legally?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll ask a general counsel.
And to, to, to make it easier through you, Mayor, it really relates to, which I thought we put in there, but looking at it, um, we didn't. Uh, to point two on page one twenty one. I could have sworn we said everything was by application, but.
Yes, we did say that, councillor. I remember that.
All right, so if we clarify then the minutes for that point two, we're not going to need point two in this one.
That's right. Just amend the minutes and just say the minutes should read by application.
All right, beautiful. Then we don't need point two on that. Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And so just receive a note. Any objections? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page one two six. Thank you. That was councillor Sheldon and councillor. When you all run at me, I can't distinct voices. Okay, thank you, councillor Haddad. Okay, any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, look, carry, carry. Next items on page one three four.
I'll jump in here.
Okay.
Um, we need, if I understand it, we need nine names for the delegates, uh, voting delegate.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's nine of us here.
Is there?
I did. Yep. I note that councillor Haddad already has a vote.
Oh, yes, that's true.
That's what happens, it.
Okay, so. There's eleven of us, councillor Hagerty. If you take councillor Haddad off, that's ten.
One, two, three, four, five, six. I can't see councillor, uh.
Yeah, she's here. I can hear the baby. Unless someone else has got a baby we don't know about. Who's had a secret baby?
I think it might be mine with my pussycat.
Oh, your pussycat. All right then. So, um, going on that, you're putting up the motion that the nine councillors in attendance, um, with the exception of councillor Haddad and councillor ARD, the voting delegates, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, have we got a second now?
Uh, uh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, councillor Haddad. All right, um, any objections? So you're moving the recommendation with those names.
I'll have to second.
Thank you, councillor Road. Oh, councillor, yeah, that councillor Rhodes can second. I'll put it those in favour, those against, the carrot carried. The next item is on page one five O.
I'll, I'll see them whatever councillor Hall puts up, Madam Mayor.
Sorry?
That was quick. Yes, I have a notice of motion, Madam Mayor.
What is your motion, councillor?
I've sent it to, uh, George, so he should be able to put that up.
Okay. Okay, the council conducts extensive community consultation with residents, property owners, bordering and proposed stormwater and flood mitigation works and sufficient resources we provide to conduct comprehensive consultation exercise and proposed plans for those works we brought back to council for approval. Write to the appropriate minister for the environment asking for the current stormwater policy review based on community feedback and any unintended detrimental effects of these policies. Moved by councillor Hall, seconded by councillor Chitty. You, you wish to speak to your motion, councillor Hall?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, just briefly. I, I know councillors know the presentation that I did, uh, at the previous council meeting. I think it was the previous one, where we had, um, slides of, uh, my, my problems with the current proposal. So, look, I'm, I'm happy to read just something very quickly.
Your coach.
While I'm pleased that council addressed community concerns regarding stormwater drainage systems, I'm not convinced that the proposed stormwater flood mitigation proposals are in the best interests of the wider community. My previous presentation to council pointed out the problems that are caused by this new approach to stormwater drainage treatment as well as flood detention basins. Bear in mind that the system of concrete line canals and drainage systems has been virtually maintenance free for several hundred years, while this relatively new so-called natural open drain system has already proven itself to be a problem that will take enormous resources to maintain, let alone remediate. Sadly, well-intentioned state government regulations, despite the concerns raised since two thousand and eight, works proceeded at Middleton Grange, Parkbridge Estate and parts of Austra, and most recently around Seventeenth Avenue. Those works are now being criticised by many of the residents and as not meeting their needs. Flooding due to blocked drains, overgrown detention basins, causing fire risks and the lack of essential regular maintenance of culverts over creeks and stormwater channels needs to be addressed. Sadly, those proposed systems will be at a far greater cost to council and rate payers than previous systems of hard surface line channels and canals. It does little to improve the health hazards that are currently being experienced. I understand the need that water quality is maintained and where possible improved, but that should not be at the expense of the health and safety and the wellbeing of the community. I believe council should lobby the state government to address these issues and retain the previous systems, including stormwater channels with fitted with low-flow pipes and regularly spaced wet flood detention basins, similar to those at Waddle Grove Lake, and those be implemented wherever possible. I think that should do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Does anybody wish to speak against it?
I'll be voting against it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll call for the vote then. Um, it might be easier to ask those that are voting against the motion. Could you please raise your hands? Let's try that.
Yeah, my hands up.
Your hands up. I can see you in the, so one against. Oh, thank you for that. I'll go through councillor AR. Councillor Balut.
Against.
Councillor Hadchidi.
For me.
Councillor Haddad.
For.
Councillor Hagerty.
Can I have another look at it? Sorry, I didn't. I'm just trying to work out if we're actually endorsing anything here.
No, conducts, we're doing consultation with the residents and look, putting together enough resources to do that consultation and, uh, look at plans for works to be brought back to council and also writing to the minister explaining the concerns we have about the current stormwater policies.
Is it too late to foreshadow?
No, you just hold on to that thought.
Madam Mayor, before that happens, am I able to ask a question?
We're in the middle of a vote. It's unusual, but I will, um, is it really important?
Yes.
Okay, go on.
Um, uh, my question was just around, um, whether like a consultation process would, um, would impact timelines and therefore cause, um, cause issues into sort of managing any stormwater issues in the meantime.
I'll ask the CEO.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, my immediate response to that, councillor, would be that, um, any consultation exercise obviously has an impact on the timeframes. Um, but the whole objective of that is to produce better outcomes from, I mean, on the basis of being better informed by that consultation exercise. But last, Mr Atar, um, if he has any further comment, Nick, around specific timeframes.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr CEO. Firstly, can I, can I take this opportunity to thank, uh, thank councillor Hall for this, uh, uh, motion because it sort of reaffirms the direction that we were proposed to proposing to take as outlined in the report and as outlined in the briefing last week. Uh, so in terms of, uh, the, the timeline for consultation process, uh, as, as I've explained in the briefing, the consultation, community consultation is front and centre of this process, so we would actually allow uh, for consultation in our progress. But can I just seek a clarification, please? Uh, 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 there, there will be times where, uh, the flood detention basins or the flood mitigation works are enabling structure and by its very nature, there will be times where, uh, it will proceed as a development. So I think the wording of the motion, uh, kind of covers this. Uh, but there will be times where we will not be able to, 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 to consult with the community because there won't be any, because there will be times, as I pointed out last week, where these works will go through bushway and, and, and open space. So as long as council officers are given that judgment and that flexibility, uh, I have absolutely no, uh, no concerns, uh, with the timelines. But can I also ask, I'm sorry, can I ask another question or seek clarification that this motion is in addition to the recommendation that's in the book?
Uh, yes, it is. That's, that's what it was supposed to be. One and two S's and add these to it. My apologies.
Thank you.
So that's one, two, three and four.
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to vote, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Withdraw my foreshadow.
Yeah, now I'm going to change my vote, having been told that as well.
All right, that's good.
Four points rather than two.
Same.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Blue, you changing as well? Yeah, thank you.
If it's not going to hinder the progress, indeed.
Thank you. Councillor, uh, Sheldon's changing. Councillor Rhodes?
Yeah, just ask whether it's unanimous, Madam Mayor. I'm for.
Well, I'm just trying to get there, so the, the, she, she keeps moving on me. Um, councillor, can we keep the sheet up, please? Thank you. Uh, councillor Hagerty's voting for, councillor House voting for, councillor Caliander?
Turns out my question was useful after all, um.
It was very important.
I'll vote for then, thank you, Madam.
Councillor County?
For.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item is on page one fifty nine.
Um, Madam Mayor, we'll move the committees as a whole.
Yes.
Sorry, can we pull out heritage?
Yes, okay. Uh, second up for moving the whole, with the exception of heritage.
I'll say that.
Thank you, councillor Caliander. Okay, I'll put it those in favour, those against, carry carried. And the heritage one is it's lost it, badly. Uh, it's on page one, uh, two, one, four.
I've got a small point on that while you add two things, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, councillor.
I've got a small point on that one as well.
Yes, certainly, okay. Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The first is in regards to point three. Um, amend the charter to increase the term of appointment from two to four years to align with council. I just want to get some rationale as to why that's the case. My, my, uh, my theory of good governance is that you, it's good to have a bit of diversity and a bit of mix. And, and while you have the same councillors for four years, it's good to have a, a different bunch of people on a committee every two or, you know, vice versa, um, so that there's a, a mix of views if you have sort of the same, same bunch of people for four years who tend to fall into the trouble of groupthink and, and new ideas and fresh ideas are always good governance. So I just want to get some, some feedback on why we're going from two to four.
Thank you. I'll ask the CEO.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Mr Smith?
Uh, thank you. Through the CEO, councillor, I believe that was a recommendation of the, the heritage committee. Um, the heritage officer has advised me, one of the reasons he sees to support that uh, was every two years then we do an expression of interest and it does take time. Uh, but ultimately, that's a matter for council. It was more to do with for the term of council having, having, um, the same committee so that, um, every two years we don't then have to do an expression of interest. So it was a recommendation from the committee for council's consideration.
Right, well. Uh, councillor Sheldon, do you want to, do you want to go or do I?
Well, two things. First of all, I don't think there was actually a resolution of a committee to that effect. Uh, term of council won't be four years anyway, the next term. And lastly, the, um, on page four, halfway down the page, it's got councillor Sheldon queried the above-ground bolts. That should be the above-ground vaults. It doesn't otherwise make sense.
So you don't want to be looking at bolts?
Yeah, the, um, it was talking about picnics on vaults.
Yeah, so I remember the discussion.
Yeah, and, and the committee might have talked about extending the term, but I don't actually see a resolution to that effect. And rather than say four years, if it is going to happen, you might want to say for the term of the next council, which clearly won't be four years, it'll be two and one bit.
Hmm. Which I think sits nicely with, um, what everybody's wanting, I think, but, um, it's a matter for council.
I'm going to move that.
I would agree.
Will we just remove three?
Right.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Chitty.
All right, and just another question.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if anyone else got it, but there was an email late the afternoon from a member of the public. Um, just in regards to the management of the heritage collection. Um, to advise and make recommendations in relation. Um, to advise and make recommendations in relation to the management of the heritage collection uh at the museum and at the powerhouse art centre. Can I just get an update on, on where that's at, what we're thinking? Uh, as you'll see later in the agenda, we're a hundred and fifty years old next year, uh, as a municipality. Um, and uh we should be looking after our history. I just want to get a just want to make sure that we're doing what we can to preserve um that, that, that stuff.
I think we may have to take someone on notice, councillor.
All right, I'll flick it through. I'll flick the email through.
Okay, lovely. Thank you. Is there any opposition now to the motion that's moved by councillor Hagerty and secretary?
Madam Mayor, can I, I make a, I have a question for me?
Yes, certainly.
Yeah, okay. Uh, in reference to what councillor Hagerty was talking about was, uh, could be handled eh with a, uh, addition to the motion by saying that council provide a report back on the, um, on what the, uh, financial implications would be to hire a heritage person who looks after heritage stuff. I've forgotten the wording of it.
Professional archivist.
Yes, a professional archivist. And that would give us a basis to, to move forward on it.
Councillor Hagerty, you happy with that addition?
Re- report, email, whatever, yep.
Yep.
I'll withdraw my seconding, ma'am.
Thank you. We've got a second up for councillor Hagerty's motion.
Yes, I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. All right, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried.
Probably reporters voting against me, please.
Councillor Hagy, sorry, councillor Chitty against and councillor Shelton against.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm for, for the typist. That last paragraph is vault, V A U.
Vault, yep. Thank you. All right, moving to questions with notice on page two, two, nine, in the name of uh councillor Hall.
Oh, you're catching me unprepared. Sorry about that.
That's okay, I've got papers everywhere.
Uh, look, I'm happy with the report.
Okay.
Uh, I must admit, uh, my, my concern is that the government isn't doing enough fast enough to address the issue and the recommendations that they have made. And I've read the reports and I thank the councillor officers for putting all that together. We know it's been an issue for many, many decades and sadly I don't think the, um, the, the proposals that the government is proposing will actually do very much to address the issue. It puts the onus on the trolley owners and not on the people breaking the law.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item's in your name as well on page two, five, one.
Two, five, one. Uh, that was.
Covid English language.
Ah, yes, again, I'd like to thank, uh, the director for community, uh, Tina, is it, uh, who presented the report to me. I'm very happy with that and I'm also happy with the efforts of council helping to, uh, improve literacy and, uh, obviously understanding the, the English language courses that are helping the community. So thank you very much for that. Much appreciated.
Wonderful, thank you. The next item's in councillor Chitty's name and it's on page two fifty three.
All good. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, staff.
Thank you. Next item's councillor Hagerty on page two, five, five.
Yes, clearly this question has caused ripples all the way to Macquarie Street and the government has allowed community sport as a result. Or alternatively, they were always going to do it and, um, yeah, anyway, thank you. Thank you for this.
Probably let us sadly decide.
Just, just, just on that, ma'am.
Yep.
If we, if we can, um, obviously it wasn't councillor Hagerty why they returned community sport, but they've returned this, the the, the, the swimming. Are, are we going to have different rules in our LGA compared to the actual health orders? It's an issue that's being raised.
I'll ask the CEO to.
I think it needs to be discussed because councillor Hagerty's been advocating everything and, um, we're still in lockdown apparently.
Well, we're still in lockdown and, um, we have been following all the health instructions to a T councillor because it's necessary to do so, but I will ask the CEO to make a comment.
Thank you.
Um, the public health order states that, that, um, swimming at outdoor pools can be undertaken by both vaccinated and unvaccinated, uh, people. Um, subject to the, uh, observance of all the, the standard protocols in terms of numbers and, and social distancing eh et cetera. Um, I spoke to our colleagues in health on Monday morning. Um, and they welcomed our initial caution. Um, and they made the point that while the pub- public health order, um, allows for that, it is a statewide public health order and there may be, uh, variations within LGAs. It's a matter for council to determine whether we want to mix vaccinated and unvaccinated. And unfortunately, the ambiguity that exists, um, there is uh, uh, an ongoing debate. I think it's being tested within court, um, around how we actually apply the public health order. Um, whether that's at the level of a, of a business or any other enterprise. So it is a problematic area, councillor, um, and all of this, as the mayor has rightly pointed out, um, we're acting on as a minimum, uh, uh, on the advice of the public health order. And where we feel appropriate, the additional measures are justified. Um, I think it's appropriate to do that.
Uh, uh, and, and this is not having a go at any representative, this is away from staff, but we've been jumping up and down saying treat us the same as everybody else. They treat us the same as everybody else, yet we then go in there and put more restrictions in place. Now, are we following the health order or are we not? And anyone, and I'm not being critical here of anybody, I'm just trying to get an understanding because it's, there's been a lot of debate and argy-bargy from residents in relation to the, to this. And we following public health orders? Um, we lobby to be treated the same as everybody else. We get treated the same as everybody else, yet we put in new rules. I'm just trying to get an understanding on how to respond to people.
Yeah, and the, the difficulty here, councillor, is that there are a number of, uh, parallel legislative items at play. Um, we're obliged under the W H S Act, uh, to provide a safe and secure work environment for our staff and our patrons. This is the crux of the debate that is currently ongoing. Um, and we're trying to balance off, and in the absence of absolute clarity in that regard, we have to make a judgment call. And given, given the numbers, the high numbers that remained at play in Liverpool last week.
I'll second it.
We have, we have decided, and you know, the mayor and I have attended briefings from our colleagues in health where they, uh, expressed ongoing concern with the numbers within Liverpool. Um, and, um, in trying to balance off that judgment call, we have to take consideration not only of the public health order, but also of at times contradictory or competing legislation around W H S. That is a matter that's yet to be determined definitively. In the meantime, we have to exercise our judgement.
Okay, through, through you, ma'am, if I may, what was the purpose then to whoever it was that kept jumping, oh, sorry, calling on the state government to treat us the same as everybody else in Sydney?
There are several issues with that councillor, including the lockdown eh with regards to being only allowed to move between our suburbs and the five kilometre rule and also at one stage the curfews. So a lot of the, um, I suppose restrictions have been brought in to modify the residents' behaviour and have them not move away from their home environment. Because like it or not, the transmission of the virus still is with family members who move out into the workforce and come home. And our families, as you know, are bigger than the inner city. And subsequently, people bring that virus back to their family and the whole family gets it. Currently, the Department of Health is trying to treat family units in their family home unless they need hospitalisation. And subsequently, the health, um, people are actually doing the treatment in people's homes. So trying to keep your population as close to home as possible is what I think the health orders are trying to achieve. We are still unfortunately seen as a suburb of concern and we are still seen as a hotspot. That hasn't gone away. We have successfully been able to lobby to have the curfews lifted and the helicopters stopped, which I'm personally happy about. Um, but we've also managed to get the pools open and they're not open slathered, they are outdoor, so people actually can have a more safer environment to recreate. But there are workers' safety issues to be considered as well. So it's not a, and people can avail themselves whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated to the swimming pools that we have that meet the health requirements. But they do have to follow strict health requirements. And that is going to be the issue, I think, for some time, like it or not. Um, it, there's no magic bullet in this, councillor Chitty, I'm sorry to say. There will always be a group of people in our community who will not be vaccinated for whatever reasons. And that will be their issue and they will, as I'll quote the premier, there will be different rules for those who are vaccinated and those that aren't. But in this situation, everybody is able to go for a swim as long as they follow the health rules. Councillor, you go on.
So just, just a point of clarity then, ma'am, and, and I agree with pretty much everything you've said there. I'm not arguing in that case.
Hmm.
So a point of clarity then, if an unvaccinated person rocks up as per the health orders, we won't be turning them away?
As far as I'm aware, as long as they do everything they should do, they should be able to avail themselves to the swimming pool outside.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So, so they are able to attend.
If they follow the health instructions.
The health orders.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, if I can just add some clarification there, the, the complicating factor in this is that the access the outdoor swimming pool.
You've got to go through.
Into the building. That exposes people inside, in those indoor areas, to the added risk. And the decision that we have taken at an operational level has been to err on the side of caution and ask that only vaccinated, uh, patrons are permitted to enter and use the facilities. We are within our legal rights to do that.
In other, in other council areas, they have complete outdoor swimming pools which are autonomous, where they can actually access change rooms, toilets, et cetera, without going inside a building.
Ma'am, can I move a motion that funds the cost of a bolt cutter and a new gate so that it's outdoors and we comply with the health orders?
No, I think that's a very mischievous, um, motion and it would have to pass some engineering rigor. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Councillor, uh, Hagerty, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, I know you, you've, um, raised the issue of helicopters and thank you, I, I don't know how, whether they really have gone away or not, but they're still hovering around, but thank you for fighting the good fight on that one. Um, the biggest issue for me through this whole thing has been the lack of clarity and the lack of transparency. So you look at, uh, let's say you look at Liverpool and, and restrictions here and then you look at other parts of Sydney and they're not under restrictions or you look at Parramatta or Berwood and the numbers there and why, why are they locked down? Uh, my biggest complaint has been that there, there needs to be more clarity, more transparency to say, you know, when you hit this amount of vaccination or you hit this amount of cases, we'll open you up, we'll close you down. So in order to be completely consistent, I'm going to ask the question, uh, is there, is there a hard figure at which we will open up, um, uh, you know, when we will relax these restrictions? You know, if we hit a certain amount of cases per day, if we hit a certain vaccination rate, will, will, is there a point at which we will allow everyone into the pool?
My understanding is, councillor, we are guided by the health regulations and it, at this point of time, they're talking about seventy percent and eighty percent vaccination rates. This week, double doses in Liverpool is sixty point three percent.
Yeah, so keep getting those vaccination numbers up and.
Unfortunately, the vaccination rate will be what I think is the indicator on how things will change. And while I, while we, we have the audience, Liverpool Hospital, as we've heard, has had cases. But it is also a hospital that is taking active COVID cases. It's, it's actually, that's its job. I know that it's spread in the hospital, but they have very stringent guidelines and how to control infection. But Liverpool and Campbelltown Hospital both will be taking a lot of the cases and the Wollongong Hospital will be in overflow. So it is going, you're going to probably hear more and more about Liverpool and Bankstown, unfortunately. Councillor Rhodes, you have your hand up?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I, I was just wondering from this conversation whether we should be taking note of the, uh, what it does present the difficulties. And I was wondering, um, with our plans up there at, um, at Khan's Hill for the pool facility up there, I wonder if we should be incorporating into future plans, um, situations where outside pools, you know, are isolated from indoor areas that can be opened up, obviously, when we don't have a problem. But, um, but are open to people who are unvaccinated. Uh, if that is going to be the health regulation.
I, I think what you're saying is future designs of, um, swimming pools or aqua- uh, aquatic centres incorporate separate entrances and exits.
Yes.
So that if there's ever any need to do this again, it can be done with better ease. And I think that picks up on councillor Chitty's.
Exactly. I thought the bolt cutters was a good idea.
No, I'm afraid it's very mischievous one. But yes, I think that can be taken on board without a problem, councillor.
Just one more, Madam Mayor. Um, take, you take this one on notice, but can we just get a update briefing, however you want to do it, just on, um, put this policy for staff around vaccination, but also policy for subcontractors around vaccination. So, but you know, regards to this one, obviously it's run by Belgravia. What are their policies? Um, if there's a bunch of staff there that don't want to get vaccinated and want to turn up every day with a rapid antigen test saying, I'm okay, uh, just, just, I want to make, get what, what's our view on that? What are, what's our legal exposure? What are we, what are we doing in that space?
Okay, thank you. We can take that on, on notice. Councillor Chitty?
Sorry, ma'am, just in relation to that, does, and when, following councillor Hagerty's question, in that response, does that mean then if staff aren't fully vaccinated, they can't come to work?
I'll have, I'll have to ask the CEO about that.
Yeah, staff, sorry councillor, can you clarify which staff you're referring to?
Obviously, it's a staffing issue, but I'm just trying to, with the swimming pools, our residents can't go unless they're double dosed. Does that mean that we've got no staff anywhere because of work safe, health than everything else uh, that are attending that aren't double dosed?
I'd have to take that on notice, councillor.
Thank you.
Councillor Rhodes, you've got your hand up?
Oh no, sorry, ma'am.
Okay then. Thank you. So that was an interesting discussion. Councillor Hagerty, you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is on page two fifty six in the name of councillor Hall.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm waiting for the information.
Thank you. Next item is councillor Rhodes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, same, waiting, happy to wait to.
Waiting, waiting, waiting. And councillor Caliander on page two fifty eight. And councillor Caliander on page all the next three. So you're waiting, 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 councillor Caliander.
Uh, yeah, I'm happy with, happy to wait on the first two, but with the third one, I, I believe that was already, uh, answered at the councillor briefing session last week. So I'm not sure if that's possible, but I'm happy to take it off notice.
All right, lovely. Thank you for that. The next item is in your addendum booklet and it's on page six forty six.
Few questions.
Councillor Hagerty, what are your? Wait a minute, in take turns, councillor Hagerty, what is your motion? What is your question?
Um, just in regards to the staging, um, how hard or fast is that? Um, and, uh, from my understanding, um, there are there are lots that sort of straddle stage one and, you know, stage two, stage three, um. Are we, I assume we want to consolidate lots here and, uh, what are the incentives around lot consolidation? That's probably a two-pronged question.
I'll ask the CEO.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Mr. Smith?
All right, thank you, councillor. Through the CEO, it's an indicative staging plan at this, at this point. The primary reason for the staging plan The primary reason for the staging plan was from the consultation that we did last time. Uh, there was concern about how it would actually work in practice. Because you have to raise the land, including the roads, to be above the flood planning level, including the evacuation routes. So what we've tried to do is match up. As much as possible, the, the areas to be set aside for compensatory flood storage with the developable land. So at this point, it's, it's indicative. Uh, obviously, for a planning proposal, you don't need to write in depth what the rules are, you write what the intention is. Uh, and then when it goes on consultation, we can have a look at what the community thinks about that, but. The primary concern that we have is for development to occur in this precinct needs to go from a north to south to be able to deal with the flood hazard in that area. Um, but the actual wording of the planning proposal, when it goes to parliamentary council for Gazettele. Is still open and we can massage that a little bit depending on um feedback from the community.
All right. And just to follow up on that one, um, yeah, just why, why the staging was, you've sort of half answered it, but. Why the staging was uh, set up the way it was. For me, one of the major issues that we're trying to resolve here is the planning conflict between horses and trucks. Um, and, and that any staging plan would, would take that into consideration, uh, the main issue there being um Manning Street. And, but yeah, I guess the question is, yeah, how did we arrive at, you know, what was the logic behind stage one, two, three, four?
I'll ask the CEO to ask the pertinent officer, who happens to be Mr Smith, I would imagine.
I did correctly, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Through the CEO councillor, the, the rationale for the staging from a north to south um is to do a topography. So obviously for development to occur, uh, we need to, the whole precinct needs to be raised above the flood planning level to meet. Ministerial directions and council's flood policy, including the evacuation routes. So you can't, for instance. Say stage one would be what's identified um at number three on page six, six, two. Uh, because effectively that would get raised then for people to get out. If the, if there was a flood, they would then drop back down into the floodwaters and they couldn't get out, they'd be stuck on an island. So what has to happen is development goes from the top down to the south. But I think the important part, this is an indicative staging plan, there would be nothing stopping a developer. Uh, once a plant, once the rezoning has gone through, from starting to acquire much more land than, than is identified in the staging and sequencing plan. Which would then enable um, uh, potentially the staging to be reduced. So at the end of the day, it's, it is a fragmented uh land ownership in that area. And what we have to do is give guidance to say for it to work, it has to go north to south. We acknowledge absolutely. Uh, the, the, the issues that are facing um horse trainers and landowners, particularly on Manning Street. Which is why the bypass road is shown on the plans, which is why the bypass road is identified in the contributions plans. Um, but if we were to have um the sequencing and staging plan different. We wouldn't address the flood um issues in the ministerial direction and this wouldn't proceed.
Okay. Um, couple more questions, um, you might get a rest on this one. David, um, Governor Macquarie Drive, um, it's already a bottleneck. Um, are there plans to widen it to three lanes either way? Uh, how far along? Therefore, you know, what issue does that have on, on some of the uh building heights here that, that seem to straddle along Governor Macquarie Drive? If we wanted to sort of widen it by one or two lanes. Uh, we're proposing to have fifteen storey buildings and four storey buildings right along uh the edge of Governor Macquarie Drive. What, you know, have, have we taken that into account?
I'll ask the CEO to nominate the correct councillor officer.
Mr Smith?
Yeah, I can, I can just touch on that, um, uh, Mr CEO councillor. I'd have to look more in more detail. There's quite a few attachments, as you can appreciate, for a proposal this big. Uh, but the um, the traffic impact assessment has taken into account. Uh, the potential road widens that have been funded under the Western City Infrastructure Plan for Governor Macquarie Drive. Then obviously. The contributions plan is also identifying funding for intersection upgrades in this precinct. I'll have to look at more particularly um the setbacks that are shown to the road reserve on Governor Macquarie Drive to ensure there's appropriate space. For any road widening, but the um, I think it was attachment five. Uh, to the council report, uh, which is the traffic advice summary, um. Because there is about a thousand dwelling increase compared to the ex- the first exhibited plan. To ensure, was there additional need for roadworks, road widening, et cetera? That advice was no, not, not additional compared to what was already uh included in the, the first draft of the, of the planning package.
Okay. And last one, um, I know the answer to this, but I, I assume we've got a, a very large audience. Uh, tuning in tonight. Um, just in regards to the acquisitions that have to be made for the uh open space. Can we do the process for anyone that uh owns land in there and, and, you know, the. Will they get fair and equal value? How does that process work? Um, you know, will council know of all them, I guess? I know the answer, but I just think for the benefit of the audience, if we can just talk through generally how uh acquisition works there.
Mr Smith?
Uh, thank you councillor. Through the CEO, um, it's quite complex, um, land acquisition. What we plan on doing is putting out a very clear fact sheet as part of the exhibition documents. I don't think it's appropriate that I try and explain in about five minutes the intricacies of the Just Turn Compensation Act, but I can assure you. That any acquisition that council will need to do as a result of this will follow council's processes. Uh, for land acquisition that we currently do in places like Edmondson Park and Ostrall for drainage and open space. We will follow the same process. Uh, the government does have a lot of very good information on the Centre for Land Acquisition website. Uh, but what we will do, because this is a very good question and a very fair question that a number of landowners in this area. Are concerned about is giving them very clear and accurate information about how the land acquisition process works. And we'll make that as clear as possible and also make available council's property manager to be able to answer any questions that people may have during uh exhibition.
Thank you. That's all from me.
Thank you, councillor Chitty.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of questions if I can. This plan is obviously dependent on all landowners coming on board. What happens if one drops off, as in a major landholder?
Mr Smith?
Uh, thank you. Through the CEO councillor, um, the, the, I mean, at the end of the day, if a, if an existing major landowner. Does not wish to develop in accordance with the proposed zoning. Uh, and they lodge a development application, for instance, under the current zoning, under the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act. We would still assess that development application under the current planning controls. No planning controls in this area are likely to change for probably twelve months. We, we're trying to go on uh consultation with the community on these draft plans to make sure they're as good as they possibly can be before sending them. Uh, to DPI for a gateway determination. Uh, but at the end of the day, if somebody wants to develop in accordance with their current zone, they are allowed to do so.
Just on that, then, what, what happens to this plan then?
Uh, through the CEO, the, the plan can still continue. Uh, obviously, we're not aware at this stage whether any uh applications have been lodged. Uh, uh, for something other than what's currently permissible in the, uh, under the plan or. Uh, uh, inconsistent with the, 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 the draft structure plan and planning proposal. If we do become aware of that through the exhibition process. And if council ultimately endorses this planning proposal to go to Gateway and it goes on formal public consultation. There is nothing stopping council from further revising the plans if they wanted to, for instance. Take a proposed B four R four zone off a property that might have otherwise developed in accordance with the B four. And potentially redistribute some of that density elsewhere within the precinct. Um, provided that the cap, if I can call it that, of, I think it was three and a half thousand dwellings is not exceeded. So we can certainly look at that during the, the, the public exhibition process if new information comes to light.
Beautiful, so we're still going ahead. Now, wh- when we look at areas through you, Mayor. Uh, Leffington Train Station, Edmondson Park, and I know there's a cap and we've done reports and all that. Aren't we going under in this area given the proximity to a train station? I mean, you look at Edmondson Park, there's ninety metres there, you look at Leffington, the state government's now looking at a review around that town centre. Anything around the train station, this is six and eight sort of levels. Are we undercooking this?
Smith?
Uh, through the CEO, I, I don't believe so. I mean, what we're trying to do is balance um a good urban amenity outcome. And we have increased the number of dwellings from, uh, I think it was two and a half to, two, two, two thousand two hundred to three thousand two hundred. Uh, we have to be mindful that the number of dwellings that are proposed in the broader Liverpool collaboration area. I think of eighteen thousand eight hundred dwellings and, and obviously council's supported amendment fifty two in the city centre. It's supported in principle More Point, it's supporting in principle uh this area. So we're, we're comfortable that what's being proposed at this stage is a reasonable planning response. Yes, it is very close to the, the Warwick Farm Train Station, it is an urban renewal precinct. Uh, but we do believe um the planning controls that have been put forward are suitable. Um, but of course, uh, that will be subject to public exhibition. And if council does resolve to forward it to the Department of Planning, it will be subject to the gateway uh determination process as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Do you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I actually just wanted to move a motion.
Oh, well, I've got questions, Madam Mayor.
Um, I'm happy to give the other councillors out if that's okay, Madam Mayor, because um.
Then just, if you're happy to leave it, then just um listen to the debate and then we'll get to that part. Um, there was another hand up, uh, councillor Rhodes?
Rhodes, I've got questions through you, Madam.
Yes?
Um, I've got a number of questions and I have given them to George. So that I can run through them quickly, but I don't expect them to be answered here and now. I'm happy for them to be taken on notice. And included in the follow-up report back to council. So my questions uh, around the open space. Um, the questions that I'm getting is uh what other developments have occurred in the collaboration areas and people are confused. Uh, what contributions to open space has other developments in the collaboration areas made? And that's in reference to, they compare uh the Warwick Farm Development. To the development that's down along the Georges River down near the Casula Powerhouse.
Oh, okay.
And, and um so I'd like clarification on that. Um, and further, council mentions Moore Park but doesn't mention Jackie Osman Sports Fields and it's always cut off from the map. But it's only um five hundred metres away from this particular area. And it's got enormous parks surrounding that that run back onto the Cabramatta Creek. And uh, you know, they've got those soccer field, uh, uh, softball fields down there and uh all those sporting fields that are down there, but. It's never mentioned in, in this report and I wondered why, particularly when they mention the open space which is over at Moore's Point. And that's further away than what those uh, those uh sports fields are that they re- refer to. Um, and I was wondering, or they want to know, uh, if all the surrounding sports and open space above were included. How would that change the calculation in open space rates and stuff like that? And uh, yeah, number five I've already covered. In, in regards to uh flooding. The question is that the flood plan requires cut and fill outcomes by council policy. Does council policy consider possible onsite stormwater detention? That could provide up to thirty thousand litres per building if incorporated into building foundations or possible green roofs. To further decrease runoffs. And if these were incorporated into design requirements within the precinct. Uh, i- is that a possible means of flood mitigation in the area? And if it was, would such considerations, if possible. Have a measurable impact on the necessity of the current cut and fill calculations by council and reduce the current open space needed by council? Would the design requirement of green roofs in building designs. Have a measurable impact on reducing the council calculations on the private open space? And are there other possible flood mitigation measures that could be considered similar to those above? Um, uh, that could possibly reduce the infrastructure cost uh to make this precinct more economically viable? So they're all taken on notice, Madam Mayor. I don't expect an answer right now and I'm. Happy to move the motion with just one additional point added into it.
What is your additional motion?
Um, the, that, um, they hold uh consultation. So it would be in between, if we make it a new point too, that they, council holds consultation with the. Uh, residents in the area and then just number three.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, with all due respect, I said I want to move a motion too.
So I'm aware of that. Um, councillor Rhodes's motion will be a foreshadowed one, councillor. What is your motion?
Um, Madam Mayor, actually, I, I'm interested to hear back what all those um answers will be from staff after hearing out all the other councillors. And I myself also have some concerns. I'm um mainly concerned with the staging um. And Manning Street, which has now been an issue for twenty years. The traffic there has been an issue for twenty years. Um, so I was hoping that we could defer this until the next council meeting. And provide council with a revised staging plan, which includes Manning Street in stage one.
Um, I might be wrong in assuming, but I believe the next meeting will be within the election period. So I don't think you'll be able to make any major decisions. Um, so any deferment will push this out till the first re- real meeting of the next council.
I am happy to accommodate councillor Ayad's point in the uh foreshadowed motion if that helps. That not that we put it on hold, but that um the planning also considers the staging. Um, of the de- development in consideration to the safety in- issues. Uh, along Manning Street. The staging of the development in, in consideration of the safety issues along Manning Street.
Well, I think we, I can't remember what David's words were, but it, you know, it wasn't sort of hard and fast.
No, it's not. If you can get them to consider that, it would be.
Note the staging is not, the, the, note the staging is indicative.
Yeah.
And, and notes the um planning conflict that exists on Manning Street between industrial and. And, and horse, trucks and horses.
Yeah, I believe it also needs to include um that council would appreciate if Manning Street is included in. Stage one of the development.
I think I might ask the CEO to ask Mr Smith. Um, I think this is starting to head down a. An, an interesting road, let's say. So um, could I ask the. CEO to appoint the appropriate councillor officer, just give us a bit of an idea about this motion?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Mr Smith?
Thank you. Through the CEO, I, I do note that part of Manning Street is included in stage one. Look, I do understand. Uh, the councillor's views and the community's views. I did receive far today a couple of comments from the community about this. The whole point of the staging plan uh is to deal with how development can occur and, and address the flooding issue. So as I said before, we've put together what we think is an appropriate indicative staging plan. Uh, but as I said earlier, if a developer does come in and for instance buys up. All the properties down Manning Street once this is rezoned and all the properties further to the north. The staging to, to, to a large extent is, is irrelevant. It's, it's been put in place because currently. The properties are all independently owned, uh, and we can't have individual development occurring. Um, without a proper sequencing and staging plan. Understand completely the concerns that the community has. Uh, but if we don't have that, the planning proposal will never get off the ground. It'll be knocked back at, at Gateway. Because what we can't have is development occurring uh down Manning Street. They leave their site that has been raised to the flood planning level. They get onto a road that is below the flood planning level. And if a flood does come through here, people are trapped on a flood island. So. Ministerial direction nine point one, under the nine point one directions is very, very clear. So I do think it, it is appropriate that it is indicative at the moment. The staff recommendation is that this goes out on community consultation for twenty eight days. Uh, let's hear what the community has to say. No doubt there will be um, um, strong views on that staging plan. And then we can go back to our flood experts and planning experts and urban design experts and see if there can be some tinkering around the. The indicative staging plan, but that's the reason why it is there. Not to disadvantage somebody, but to ensure orderly development occurs within this precinct. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Chitty, you can hand up again. Hold on, just the Rhodes.
Just on something you said earlier, can we just see clarification on when this is coming back and is this in this term or next term?
I'll ask the CEO.
Thanks, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, the intention is that um, if coun-
The intention is that um if council so desire that we put it out to public consultation and then a report would be brought back next for next month, um, which would be in in uh this term of council.
It will be in this term, but we are actually restricted from what sort of decisions we can make.
And this is one of them?
I I would be guided by the CEO.
Yeah, I'll take that on notice, madam mayor.
Thanks, ma'am, thanks, CEO.
Councillor Rhodes?
Uh, yes, madam mayor, I think that the uh the actress's point three is more upon the fact that the safety issue has not been addressed in this planning consideration. So uh the the safety issue is around Manning Street. So is there another way that we can word this? So that we can finally have the safety issue addressed in this planning proposal or this planning um? Document.
No.
Well, if I may, madam mayor, if I may, um, doesn't this contradict what, uh, I mean, what councillor Chitty just said and the response, it contradicts what you said earlier with all due respect. I mean, if it's coming back to us next month um after going on public exhibition and we're expected to vote on it, isn't it the same as deferring it until all the answers are brought before us? Because councillor Rhodes had some very valid questions and I'd also like to see, see the answers to.
Councillor Ayad, I take your point and I would probably agree with you, but there is a motion on the floor. And the councillors, it's a matter for the council to decide what we're going to do, so, yeah. Look, um, councillor Rhodes?
Yes, through.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Ayad seconding councillor Rhodes's motion.
And councillor Rhodes, would you be open to taking off number one? And just deferring until next month until we have all those answers?
Uh, that is endorsing the plan for it to go out onto exhibition, we've got to get it out into the public. So that everybody is fully aware of what it is inclusive of. So that they can make comment and and we get a full, full indication of what the public's um uh feelings are in in regards to what is being put before them. So it's only uh endorses the revised plan, structure, planning proposal and local contributions plan for public exhibition, am I reading that wrong, madam mayor?
No, you're right, that's exactly what it is.
I'm just a little bit concerned about the word endorse there, how about place the planning proposal and local contributions on public exhibition for twenty eight days?
I'm happy with that.
Okay. Um, madam mayor, if you, I just need a minute just to rehearse this to make the decision.
Okay. Is there any other, anybody else to speak?
While she's checking things, um, uh, is there a material difference between the word endorse or place? Does that have a legal material difference? No, okay. And I I think we still want to clean up the wording on three. Um, that's the mover and second, let me know if a couple of this, note the staging is indicative. Note the safety and planning conflict issues along Manning Street, full stop.
Yeah.
I'd be happy with that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, you've got a motion before you, um, councillors, I want the voting sheet, please.
Um, madam mayor, before we continue, can we have something in there that actually confirms it's going to come before us in October?
Well, it says further report councillor, so you have to go through the twenty eight days exhibition, so it's it's part of the process.
Okay, madam mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Ayad, are you voting yes or no?
I'm for.
Thank you, councillor Blute? Councillor Chitty?
For me.
Councillor Deed?
For me.
Councillor Hagerty?
For.
Councillor, oh, oh, councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Caliander?
Sorry, I was on mute, for madam mayor.
Definitely getting either your t-shirt. Councillor Cunib?
For, madam mayor.
Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, for, madam mayor.
Councillor Shelton?
Against, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you, and I'm for, so that's for the typists, um, so carried. The next items is presentations and we have a presentation by councillor Caliander.
Yes, madam mayor, so um I have sent it through to um to George and council staff, but I was recently presented with a petition signed by seven hundred and seventy two people um requesting a collaboration with council to develop and formalise a Fairy Glen initiative along the bush path at Harris Creek. So the signatories of this petition are overwhelmingly residents of Holsworthy, Wattle Grove, Hammondville and Voyager Point. And as you can see from the introduction, the uh initiative began as a way for local families to respond to the pretty difficult circumstances I think we've all found ourselves in over the last few months. Um, and it was unsurprisingly embraced by local children and adults alike. Um, there are obviously a um a few considerations that have to um that we have to work through, including environmental. And residents are really keen to do this in conjunction with council staff. So tonight what I'm looking to do is to present this petition to council um and to uh to see if we can uh get a commitment to working with representatives of that local community um to realise, as the petition calls it, an initiative to bring happiness. Because that's been somewhat in short supply recently, I think. So I'll I'd like to present this to council um to support and to hopefully um, you know, commit to working towards um the realisation of this initiative.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes, you have your hand up?
Oh, sorry, madam mayor.
All right, thank you, councillor Hagerty, uh, you've already spoken to your petition, but uh you wish to talk to it again?
Yeah, I'll read it this time, that might make a bit more sense. Um, issues concerning the development at forty four to forty six Maple Road, the Sula. We wish to bring council's attention, to to council's attention, a number of issues of concern with the development at forty four to forty six Maple Road, Casula. There is currently an application for subs- uh subdivision certificate, Lodge twenty seven nine to council. Where we request our matters be taken into consideration before this is issued. There are fifteen issues listed on there, I won't go into all of them, and there is, there are about a dozen residents um listed on there now. I think they're sort of cumulative issues because that area has been developed in sort of piecemeal over twenty or so years, bit by bit. Um, but, uh, you know, one of the major issues there is is just um drainage and and sewage in the area. But I'll split that through first thing, first thing tomorrow.
Thank you very much for that. Comper, now we're on to notices of motion and the next one is a I think at this point I wish councillor Hagerty a very happy birthday.
Oh, thank you, madam mayor.
And now you can deal with nappies.
It has been, it has been several decades since I have worn nappies, um. But uh, so and then uh both my kids are um, well, actually they'll both be in high school, so it's been a while since um I've had to deal with nappies. Uh, so this is not an area of expertise uh for myself, however, a resident approached me uh and basically said, why don't we have a rapid nappy rebate program like they do in some of the other councils? Uh, I had a look into that, uh, I know Pendle's done it, Paramatta's done it, I had a chat to a couple of the councillors there. Essentially how it works is you get a, you go out and buy some cloth nappies or hygiene products. You um provide it to uh council, they'll give you a rebate, at Paramatta it's about a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and you, and then that's annual. What I'm asking for here is not that we implement that program, that but that basically we go away, do the sums and and come back with a bit of a business case, so. Um, if we, I know, as I've mentioned here, um, that about ten percent of the household, oh, I can't remember what the numbers are, but a significant amount of the household waste in Paramatta after an audit was just due to nappies and and other sanitary products. If the sums come back saying you save two hundred dollars for everyone that gets clothed nappies and we give a hundred and fifty dollar rebate, that's basically fifty dollars we're saving rate payers and we're saving council, so. Um, all I want is for a report to go away and come back and 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 give us the sums um on whether that stacks up. Uh, you know, in terms of of costs and benefits, um, and also in the in the background, we've also got that um that uh directive from the state government about reducing household waste by ten percent and reduce, preventing eighty percent of waste entering landfill, so with those factors in mind, staff, please go away, do some numbers, come back and tell us whether this stacks up.
Okay, would someone like to second the motion?
Oh, I can't get it for him, madam mayor.
Councillor Rhodes, does anybody object?
I do, ma'am.
You don't want to wear nappies, councillor?
Ma'am, I needed one when I saw this come up, when I opened up the agenda, I can tell you, because yeah, I did exactly what you're doing, but unfortunately I needed one of those things.
Right.
I copped a flogging, I think in a couple of meetings ago, when I suggested a rebate for pensioners and our residents when it came to rate relief or a grant, can't call it rate relief, call it a grant during these difficult times, I understand councillor Hagerty is only asking for a report, but a report is going to take a lot of time. Do we then, does this open then the door for everything else? Do we then say, okay, is there less emissions if people get electric cars and we're going to give them a rebate? Is, if we get rid of cows, do we pay them for a cow so that there's less emissions? I mean, where does it stop if this thing actually goes through? I understand it is a report, totally understand that, but a report is going to take a lot of time, a lot of energy. Currently, council, we're struggling um in a lot of different areas in order to meet the requirements, because of COVID, not because of staff's unwillingness to work or anything. COVID has obviously put a lot of pressure on the organisation. A report like this at this time is probably not needed to pull someone away, but I don't know how many hours, how many days, how many months to be able to do this. Yeah, is it a good idea? Probably not. But, you know, maybe down the track, not during a time where we're in a pandemic, we've got other issues to worry about. We're struggling in other areas, let's just concentrate on what we need to concentrate now. And I don't think nappies should be one of our issues. And given that the 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 CEO's comments state that there is a report coming in a couple of months' time, not sure if it takes into account these exact specifics. Uh, but there is a report coming shortly in relation to waste management and maybe it's addressed in there, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Ayad, you have your hand up?
Madam mayor, I don't believe that this is a local issue that will, um a nappy rebate will not improve the lives of our rate payers and constituents. And I think this is a very personal choice for mums, I mean, the option is there to use cloth nappies and if they wanted to, they would. Um, and I don't believe that this will really make a difference, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, do you wish to speak to your motion, councillor Hagerty?
Uh, look, it it's a report.
Hold on, councillor Caliander, I won't give you a right of reply, councillor Caliander, you wish to speak?
Yes, I do, madam mayor, I wish to speak um in favour of this of this motion. We know that um, you know, in the review of our waste strategy, there are numerous um areas of improvement that we could potentially um, you know, do different things in order to um ensure that the way that we deal with waste is not only more sustainable, but also more more cost effective for a lot of our residents. I agree that in many respects, um, you know, the type of products people choose to buy is a choice. However, um, we do have um significant parts of our community that are um, you know, struggling particularly at this point in time. And so anything that we can do to sort of have the dual impact of improving sustainability whilst also supporting residents who may have to make cho- choices that they ordinarily wouldn't, um due to financial concerns, I think would be, um, you know, a responsibility that we have as the the most, the the closest level of government to our community, thank you.
Thank you, do we have any other speakers against? Councillor Hagerty, if you have your right of reply?
Madam mayor, I, can I speak against again?
No.
No.
Sorry, only get one bite of the cherry. Councillor Hagerty, you've got the right of reply.
Yeah, thank you everyone for sharing your views, uh, very informative. Um, we're not telling parents what to do, um, we're simply going away with a report uh when that report comes back. Uh, again, we won't be making a decision on what um parents can and can't do. They have a choice to use disposable nappies, cloth nappies or no nappies at all, if that's their choice. Um, in regards to the comment that this isn't a local issue, I'll read the background for those that haven't. The Department of Planning, Industry and Environment's Waste and Sustainable Material Strategy has set councils a direction to reduce household waste to reduce household waste by ten percent by twenty thirty. The strategy also has a commitment to prevent eighty percent of waste entering land through, landfill through resource recovery measures. So there is a directive from the state government for councils to reduce the amount of waste. Therefore, this is a local issue. Uh, for every nappy we keep out of a bin, we are fulfilling uh this strategy. Uh, therefore it is a local issue, so I'll leave it at that, uh, it's a report, it's consistent with everything else we're doing. Um, yeah, I'll leave it up to everyone to decide how they go.
Thank you, George, could you put the voting thing up, please? Thank you, councillor Ayad, are you voting for or against?
Definitely against.
Thank you, councillor Blute? Councillor Chitty?
Against, ma'am.
Councillor Deed?
Of course, against.
Councillor Hagerty?
I'm for.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Caliander?
For, madam mayor.
Councillor Cunib?
For.
Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, I'm for, madam mayor.
Councillor Shelton?
For, thank you, madam mayor.
Declared carry. The next item is on page, page two sixty three, also in the name of councillor Hagerty.
Yeah, look, this one's pretty straightforward, as councillor uh Caliander said, um, you know, we need a bit more happiness. Um, and as we come out of the uh the pandemic and the stigma associated with being an LGA concern, uh, I think an initiative that promotes Liverpool and promotes its history and promotes uh all the good things about this great city is uh fantastic, so let's get behind our sesquicentennial. I hope that by the time it comes around, we'll all be able to say it.
Yes, it'll have to be practised, okay, we got a seconder?
I'll second that, ma'am.
Oh, thank you, councillor Chitty, I'll do that for bipartisan. Second by councillor Chitty, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carry. And for the information of viewers and councillors, the CEO has confirmed that um, the fifth of November is when the magic date happens, so it'll be the November meeting that we really can't do much about. Okay, thank you, now, yeah.
Before you want to close, will you indulge me, given that we're going really well on time, and go back to question with notice number uh zero four?
Oh, I've just got to get my confidential document, oh, four.
No, QWN zero four, we've already dealt with it.
What page number?
Um, good question, two fifty five, Community Sport, councillor Hagerty.
Two fifty five, yeah.
Can, can I ask a couple of further questions on what we were discussing?
Well, you can ask the questions to be put on notice.
Okay, through through yourself, ma'am, to the CEO, the Whitlam Centre is operated by council or a contractor?
It's it's operated by a contractor on our behalf.
Thank you, in in relation to the double dose to allow, was that a call by us or a call by them or joint?
I'll have to ask the CEO about that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, madam mayor, uh, that was a call by us, uh, they'll agree to operate at our uh direction.
Sorry, so they had the preference to open it up to everyone?
Uh, I'm I'm not sure if they expressed the preference or not, councillor, um, it was part of a broader discussion.
Thank you, thanks, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm just, just a question in this regard, uh, madam mayor. So if I am leasing the premises and I'm running the business, the the business, how are you going to enforce it on me?
Well, that's unfortunately not our, our, our thing is to follow the health guidelines, councillor. And to liaise with our local health department, which is actually, has major concerns unfortunately still about Liverpool as a um area of concern. So um we will follow, we negotiate with health and the orders, I suppose, will be interpreted through health and discussions with health and our senior staff.
Yeah, well, I'm going by the New South Wales Government rules. Yeah, yeah, that's the rules. The rules allows me to open the premises.
Well, councillor, councillor.
So how the council can force me? Force me?
With respect, councillor, the Department of Health have made it clear that it unfortunately isn't clear. It might be clear in some areas where they have outdoor pools such as sea pools and other pools that have separate entrances. But it is a difficult situation and it has been left up to the depart, our local areas to make the calls. And we make those calls after a lot of, a lot of discussion, I might add, with our local health folks. So while I appreciate what you're saying, the the call on policy to make sure our people are safe has to be done in conjunction with Department of Health. And I'll ask the CEO if he'd like to say something.
Thanks, madam mayor, uh, uh, just in direct response to the deputy mayor's question, it's a condition of our contract. Um, and it's in there to ensure that council retains a degree of control um over the decision-making processes.
the decision-making processes in certain instances.
It's unfortunately one of those.
In the contract, there's a difference too.
Okay, we're going to move on. I have given you some indulgence. Now, councillors, I'm conscious that by looking at the um running sheet, uh did you wish to move into confidential or did you wish to just deal with the questions as they arise, the resolutions as they arise? I'll be guided by what council wants to do.
I've got a question on conf oh three, but I think it can be answered in open.
Okay. Well, let's try it open. And if it gets too difficult, we'll go into closed. All right, conf oh one, which is on page four five five.
Happy to move that, Mayor.
Happy to second it.
Oh, we've got seconders everywhere. So Counselor Chidi and Counselor Rhodes. Any objection?
No, Mayor, just a quick, well done to the authors and the director of this report. I think it puts us in good stead moving forward, um a a document that we can work towards. So well done to all involved.
Yes, and we've got F O G O coming. All right, the next thing is on page two six five.
Happy to move that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Rhodes. Seconded?
Happy to second.
Counselor Hall, any objections? I'll put it those in favour, those against, carry carried. Next item's on four six nine.
Question if I can?
Yep.
Thanks, Mayor, just a couple. Uh one is just let me see the title, so I'm not giving away anything. Acquisition for, for donation purposes. The, not sure if we have or haven't, have we purchased all the lots required to build this basin?
Through the C E O? You're on mute, C E O?
Uh Madam Mayor, I'll ask Mister Morgan. I'm not sure if Mister Milicich is available, but he was ill earlier on this week. Mister Morgan?
It's um through the C E O. Um I'll have to take that particular one on notice, um councillor.
Um that's fine, because there there is one more lot, but I'm not sure if we've actually done that or haven't previously. And then just one small clarification, the actual square meters mentioned on page four six eight compared to e-planning differ just a little bit. Question on notice. Just wanted to see if e-planning was right or the survey was right when it comes comes to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. And I'm happy to move it.
Thank you, Counselor Chidi. Moving? Anybody seconding?
Yeah, I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Sheldon. Is there any objection? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is on page four seven three.
Don't move it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Shelton.
Can I add an additional point?
We'll see what the mover thinks.
Um, uh I've I've been quite passionate this um term of council about uh community wealth building and uh local preferencing and all that stuff. We now have a local preferencing policy which was applied here. Fantastic. Um but having a look through it, I just would have liked to have seen a a lot more local companies. Um but I'd like, next time we go out for this tender that we, I don't know, have a strategy in place to encourage more local companies to apply. Tell me if I'm not allowed to do something like that, but it, you know. We did, we did all this work to encourage local companies to get a preference in terms of these tenders and and this is a really, really good one. This was exactly what the kind of stuff that this policy was meant for. And um the results here are, to be honest, need improvement.
Okay.
Yeah, we've always got a policy. You can take me off this note, Mayor.
Sorry?
You can take me off it. I'm not moving it anymore.
Okay, counsel.
All right, take it out. Put the toys back in the cotton. We we don't worry about it.
Okay, Counselor Hall, you have a comment?
Oh, sorry, Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
With with these essential trades that we're talking about, I understood that council also had tradespeople working for them. That um has that no, is that no longer the case? Do we rely entirely on external uh trades to do the work that we need to do at times?
I'll ask the C E O for a response.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And I'll ask Mister Dippis to explain uh the operational detail.
Thank you, C E O. Uh sorry, could I just get that question again? Because my internet just dropped in and out a bit. I apologize.
Sorry, what what my question is, uh council used to have tradespeople. We in fact had apprentices at one stage. Do we no longer have any of these essential trades and and therefore rely purely on contractors?
Uh that, so thank you. Through the C E O, we do have uh some some trades on hand, uh the essential ones such as electrical and plumbing. Uh this is to help with support of the surge capacity that we need. Um and uh that's that's one of the reasons why we're we're asking for this to be endorsed.
Thank you. Thank you. Um Counselor Sheldon, are you still happy to move it now?
Yeah, now it's back on.
Where it was, okay. Thank you, Counselor Rhodes. Is there any other discussion? I'll have to put up the, well, I'll ask, is anybody objecting to this particular motion? Please speak up or I'll say it's unanimous. It's unanimous for the sake of the typist. The next item's on page five three one.
Move that way. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Moved by councillor Shelton and seconded by councillor Deed. Is there any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. With that, that is the final item on our agenda. I hope that everybody continues to stay safe and please follow all the health guidelines. And it is a watch this space. Um and I'm hoping by the time we have our next meeting that we will be a little bit freer than we are tonight. Thank you very much, everybody, and good evening.